Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Can we all please settle down, take our seats so that we can start with the afternoon session?
Goeiemiddag, dames en heren. Kan je ons het opnieuw alle sittplekken innemen zodat we de middagste sessie kunnen beginnen?
Welcome to the second session on this Wednesday afternoon, where we are gathered here to deal with economic development and youth. My name is Tisneem Moutara.
Waaiwelkom bijvoorbeeld voor middagste sessie waar ons bij elkaar komen te kijken naar economische ontwikkeling in de Juch. My name is Tisneem Moutana.
My name is Tisneem Moutara and I'm the provincial whip of Gauteng, a member of the National Council of Provinces.
My name is Tisneem Moutara and I'm the provincial whip of Gauteng, in the Nationalty of Provinces.
Co-chairing is the Honorable Scheffer, who is the chairperson of the Standing Committee on Agriculture and Economic Development, a member of the Western Cape Legislature.
De middenvoorzitter is die Achbarde Scheffer en is de voorzitter van de Stande Comitie voor Landbouw en Economische Ontwikkeling en is ook een lid van de Wetskap, de provinciale Wetgever.
Let me take this opportunity now to welcome and introduce our panelists.
Laten we vanuit de geleentijd gebruikmaken om onze panelleden te verwelkommen en om ze aan je bekend te stellen.
Honorable Deputy Minister Manamela, who is the deputy minister in the presidency, responsible for monitoring and evaluation and youth development.
Achbarde Adyenk Minister Manamela is de Adyenk Minister in de Presidencia en is verantwoordelijk voor monitiering en evaluering.
O segan pati swa, Manamela opete eszulucha.
Honorable Masuku, the Deputy Minister of Economic Development.
Achbarde Masuku, die Adyenk Minister voor de economische ontwikkeling.
Nostoni beklaien pati swa kam Masuku.
And the Honorable Masina, Deputy Minister of Trade and Industry.
En de Achbarde Masina, Adyenk Minister voor Handelen en Eivereit.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to run with questions, but we have strict time limitations. We will conclude with questions. The last question being at half past four to allow all three deputy ministers ample time to respond. We'll take five questions per round and we'll see how far we get through, but the last question that we will take will be at half past four.
Dames en heren, we gaan nu beginnen met die vraag. Onz het echter waar is strikt tijdsbeperkings uit op ons van toepassing is en die laatste vraag, die laatste vraag wordt gezegd, zal om half vijf weer zijn. We gaan vijf, we gaan vijf vragen per ronde hantieren, maar ik moet niet beklem doen dat die laatste vraag om half vijf is gesteld te worden.
As we are all familiar, those who want to make written submissions and questions, the parliamentary officials will be at the back to take written submissions.
Zoals we het allemaal wel van kennis kennen, die van jullie wat geschreven voorleggings wil doen, dat is parlementaire beamte zijn achterkant van hun tent, wat jullie voor geschreven voorleggings in onvang zal nemen.
And I'm going to ask those asking questions to be as brief as possible, direct your questions to the deputy ministers and to stick within the topic on economic development and youth.
En ik ga vragen tegen diegenen wat vrouw, vrouw is opnieuw zo kort en bondig is moesten liggen te zijn om je vrouw te richten als Adyenk Minister en om te blijven bij die onderwerp wat ons voor middag bespreek.
Thank you. With that, let me allow the first question from the gentleman in front of the podium.
Daarmee de eerste vraag.
Goeiemiddag, ik is Cornelius Essau, een inwoner van George. Ik is hier om te praten over economische ontwikkeling in George.
Good afternoon, I'm Mr. Cornelius Essau and I'm from George and I want to talk about economic development in George.
I'm from George, Mr. Essau, and I want to talk... Die voornaamte teta en gees op putlis al okokos en poema et George.
Die taxi-industrie in George, wat de grootste industrie is wat hier zwart en kleurige mensen beheer voor, is en wordt hier de provinciale en plaatselijke regering van George en van de Wetskap vernietig.
I want to speak specifically about the taxi industry and this is the industry that is done by most black and colored people here and it's controlled by the local government.
Met die nieuwe systeem wordt ons operatieers peanuts betalen voor de per meter. 350 dezen rand is hier die provinciale regering op ons operatieers afgedoen. Mijn vraag is: hoe kan een man van huis gesin, voor zich gesin zorg, voor de rest van zijn leven met hieri type geld?
And now currently with the new ruling, we are paid peanuts and now the provincial government has put in place that we need to pay 350,000 rand for a taxi permit. Now the question I want to ask: How can someone with a family, with a low income, get that money to buy that permit?
Wanneer jullie in de provinciale regering praat of jullie hoofd toevat, dan vat jullie op de permit af. Toe jullie beginnen met Go George. En jullie beloven dat die taxi-industrie in beheer is voor deze BRT. Die taxi-operatieers is nu de boetes bij Go George.
And now the big question that I have is: if you take on the provincial government or you take them to court, they take away your permit. And when they started with the initiative of the... of the Go George, then suddenly it's all the same people that are employed there.
Hoe kan het economische ontwikkeling weer zijn wanneer zwart en kleurige mensen nu net dertig procent van die aandeelen, van die shares beheer ownership is uit de handen van ons, van ons zwart en brein mensen gevat?
Now, skies. How can you talk about economic empowerment when only thirty percent of white and colored people can have shares in this specific industry after it has been taken out of their hands?
Black and colored people. Beyer van die taxi-drivers zit nog bij die heus zone werk. Sliding door operators zit zone werk bij die heus. Volgens de provinciale regering of de plaatselijke regering eten jullie die de rechterkwalificaties zien, allover jaren in die taxi-industrie is, zie jullie de rechterkwalificaties zien.
And now a lot of these people are sitting at home and apparently they are told they don't have the right qualifications even though they've been doing this for years. Mr. Cornelius, can you please conclude your question? Meneer Cornelius, kan je eens opnieuw net afhandelen?
Mijn, mijn vraag is: hoe kan daar gepraat worden, van al in George? Hoe kan er gepraat worden van zwart bemachtiging voor ons mensen en van al die toetreden van Juch tot die, tot die taxi-industrie? Gepraat wordt van economische bemachtiging? Ons wil vragen dat die Nationale Regering rechtig waar onderzoek komt doen naar die Go George project wat eigenlijk ligt in Georges.
Our main question is that the government would come and do an investigation into the Go George project. Thank you. Can we have the next question?
Goeiemiddag, ik is Ebie Gjell Waldeman. Ik woon in een rural gebied, namelijk Ward 24. Ons val onder de George Municipale tijd. Voorien?
Good afternoon, I'm Ebie Waldeman. I live in a rural area, namely Ward 24, and we resort under the George Municipality.
Voorien is ons onder de Eden Municipale tijd gevallen.
Previously, we were under the Eden Municipality.
En Eden heeft voor ons beyer een plek gehad rondom jong mensen.
And Eden did a lot for us with regard to young people.
Onder daar, wat ons onder Eden Municipale tijd geweest is, eten jullie internships gehad, namelijk die reality en so forth. En ons het programma gehad, die War on Poverty programma, beyer programma onder Eden Municipale tijd.
When we resorted under Eden Municipality, they had many programs that we were involved in, namely the War on Poverty programs and so on. And there were also internships that were available for us.
Allee het die jong mensen van die rural area, daarbij ons, bemachtig met motorlicenties, bestierslicenties, verschuwen toch? Computer courses is het ons gedaan. Ons heeft school of technology gehad, waar onze mensen opgeleid om carpenter te worden. En beyer meer goeders, zeder dienen is ons onder George Municipale tijd. George ontwikkel niet, die Juch niet. George zit niks in die Juch en niet.
And back then, they also offered us many courses. They offered us computer courses, a school of technology that was available to us, where we could develop our skills. But George is not offering anything for the youth.
Die area waar ons vandaan komt is meer plaatsen. Zo dat is meer plaskinders. Die plaatsen wordt hieri wit mensen bestier. Zo onze kinders kan niet net op die plaatsen gaan werken. Onze kinders heeft meer potentie. En George Municipale tijd moet het beginnen in sim.
The area where we reside is mainly farms and those farms are managed by white people. And our children can't just go and work on the farms. Our people have more potential and George Municipality has to start realizing this.
Ik wil graag vandaag weten hoeveel jaar Nationale Regering beskikbaar is daar aan George Municipale tijd om die Juch van George te ontwikkelen?
I would like to know today how much money is made available by national government to George Municipality in order to develop the youth in George?
Ms. Waldeman, please conclude your question.
Ik, dan is onze kantoor in Harlem. Die kantoor wordt vier ieren opgehouden. Die persoon waar hij werkt, werkt per fortnight. Hij kan niet bij die plaatsen uitkomen om die plaskinders te bedienen, met programma niet. Ik wil heen dat die minister moet kijken daarna om voor onze volledige kantoor te geven met faciliteiten van wat bares ons wil anzoekt doen voor werk. Maar ons kan hierse kopie maken niet. Van ons moet ene rand toendag betaal om een kopie te maken. Dan moet ons nog naar die postkantoor te rijden, vier, veertig kilometers, om die postig weg te gaan e-mail of gaan stier.
And then we have an office in Harman, where we live. But unfortunately, that office is only open for four hours. And there's a person who works there, but that person only works fortnightly. And we also want to... It costs us money if we want to go and post something because we have to drive all the way and it costs us one rand forty to post, to send away that piece of postage.
Ik wil net, en die laatste iets is dat al voorien met Eden eten jullie programma gaan ran op die plaatsen, die boeren willen niet die mensen op jullie plaatsen heen om onze Juch te ontwikkelen. Jullie moeten werkelijk daarna kijken dat ons toegang krijgt tot die kinders op die plaats.
And I just want to add that previously in Eden, that we used to run projects for children on farms and the farmers don't want us to have access to the children on the farms and you must really pay attention to this so that we can get access to the children on farms. And what I said previously also, that the office must be made available so that we can do the necessary applications and we can make photocopies there. That's the office in Harlem.
Thank you. Can we please get the third question?
Ik is Maarten Waldeman van Harlem. Ik verteed een woord naar Pafusa en ook let van Afassa.
I'm representing Pafusa and also a member of Afassa.
Mijn verzoek is aan die minister wat ontwikkeling van die achtergebleven mensen betreft.
My request is to the minister and it's regarding previously disadvantaged peoples.
Vooral in de landbouwsector. Ik wil net dit noemen. Dat in de Zuidkaap is die bemachtigingsprojecten wat landbouw betreft en die aandelen schema, waar plaswerkers aandelen kunnen koop, deseklig.
I want to specifically refer to the agricultural sector and in the Eastern Cape, where you could be able to buy shares. It's complete nonsense.
Zo ik vraag dat al daar die projecten, die er nationaal geonderzoek wordt.
So I want to request from you that all of those projects will be investigated nationally.
Die innerste mensen wat bij hieri projecten baat gevonden, dat was die commerciële boeren.
The only people who benefited from this was the commercial farmers.
Zo dit is mijn pleitje en wat persoon wat de plaats hier bij, bij, bij grondzaken.
So this is my plea, that someone who is renting a farm...
Die plaatsen naam is Nocturne.
The farm's name is Nocturne.
Die, die DA regering van de Wetskap, daar die plaats, bij daar die commerciële boer gekoop voor zeven miljoen rand.
The DA government purchased that farm for seven million rand.
Volgens Landbank was die plaats vaardig twee punt vijf miljoen.
And the value of the farm was estimated at two point five million.
En heeft nog die geleentijd gehad om al die moveable property het te gevat en heeft het op een feileng verkoop.
And they also had the opportunity to took all the movable property and it was sold on an auction. Can you please conclude your question?
Ja, mijn, mijn, mijn vraag is, is dat daar die specifieke project ook moet onderzoek worden, waarin daar is volgens mij, tussen, tussen die plasboer en, en, en grondzaken en landbouw wat de grootste culprit is hier in die, in die Zuidkaap, is daar corruptie gepleegd, beyer dan kie.
My question is just that there will be an investigation because according to my knowledge there was corruption that took place in the sale between the farmer and the people who purchased the farm. Thank you. Can we get the fourth question, please?
Diabulis, ik am alam, ik is CPW Matheys.
I greet everybody, I am CPW Matheys.
Ik kreet allemaal hier CPW Matheys.
In de Suga Gula Retirement Village, Apatek, et George.
I am from the Apatek Retirement Village, that is now known as George.
Ik is van de Apatek Aftriddorp, wat nu bekend staan als George.
Honorable members in front of us.
Achbarde leden, wat voor ons zit?
Ochulumende was de Western Cape, wij hadden ook.
The Western Cape government is telling lies.
De Wetskapsregering is bezig om te leggen.
They every now and then say they are winning audits because they have a productive municipality.
Namensje, die voorna, sine kalele inyani, tinabandabacha, bases Southern Cape.
Today I want us, young people from the Southern Cape, to tell you the truth.
Vandaag van de keer dat die jong mensen van de Zuidkaap voor die waarheid goed vertellen.
Akkoop putlis al abandabacha, du, 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 klerry.
In, in this region, there are no development progress things that are being done for the youth in the region as a whole.
En hier is druk, is daar geen ontwikkelingsgerichte activiteiten wat plaatsvindt voor die Juch niet.
Honorable members, I feel, I all, I want to call you to be nearer at George so that I can simply show to you all these things that I speak about.
Achbarde leden, ik wil je graag vragen om naar George te komen zodat ik voor jullie kan wijst wat ik van praat.
We are divided by a bridge. On the other side of the bridge is African or black people. On the other side, it is white people.
Ontwoord verdeeld hier de brug. An de ene kant van die brug is het Afrikanen of zwart mensen en aan de andere kant van die brug is het blanke mensen.
In order to see any development, you see it at that other side of the bridge.
Als je eenig ontwikkeling wilt zien, dan zullen jullie het aan de andere kant van die brug zien.
When I'm about to step down, I wanted to give you a clear picture of what I was about to say.
Ik wil net voor je duidelijk een preking geven van wat ik van voorneem was om te zeggen.
If you look at other provinces, you see projects of the youth being implemented and they are continuing to be visible, being seen by all of.
Als je kijkt naar andere provincies, dan zal je zien dat daar Juchprojecten geïmplementeerd wordt en daar die projecten is zichtbaar voor die mensen.
Yeah, in our area. If they take ten people, send them to undergo a licensed project, they will make noise thereafter, continuing for about three years, making noise about that issue.
Daar in ons gebied, als jullie tien mensen vat en hun steren daar project doen om daar betrokken te raken, dan zullen we voor drie jaar lang daar oorgeraas maken.
I remember our government that we believe in had said, whatever is being done, there should be one person representative from the youth who shall look after the interests of the youth.
Ik geloof dat ons regering, wat in ons gelooft, gezegd dat wat ook al gedaan moet worden, bij welke activiteit het ook al plaatsvindt, daar één jong mens moet zijn voor de belangen van de Juch is al verdeenvoordig.
Mr. Matheys, please conclude your question.
If you look at our province, you will see elderly people who really do not have any interest of looking after youth interests.
Als je kijkt naar ons provincie, dan zal je ouder mensen zien wat werkelijk geen belangen daarin heeft om in de jong mensen zijn belangen om te zien.
I asked, comrade Putti Manamela, they must never again come to your people at parliament and tell you a lot of lies that they are looking after the interests of the people.
Ik vraag voor komrade Putti Manamela dat jullie nooit weer naar jullie te moeten komen in die parlement en voor jullie levensvertel en voor jullie zeggen dat jullie naar de belangen van de jong mensen omzien.
Thank you. Can we take the fifth question before I allow the deputy ministers to respond?
I'm Zwan Di, lenelani from George. I'm Annan Do Association there.
Ik werk door voor een sekreverinniging.
I want to know or the clarity about what does the BRT stands for?
En ik wil een beetje duidelijkheid hebben hoe er precies wel verstaan BRT.
In George, we've got what is called Go George that is there for development of the taxis.
In George, het is iets genoemd Go George voor de ontwikkeling van taxis.
As taxi-drivers, we've got an organization or an association called Santako.
Als taxi-bestiders is onze verinniging genoemd Santako.
Als taxi besteeders is onze vereniging genoemd Santako.
O ti taguza ino, esfana nezi skak Go Georgei, efu ba uyas koteela, umaspala was eh Georgei agamfuna anga Santako.
When there are discussions that have to happen in regard with Go George, Santako is supposed to represent us, but that never happened.
Wanneer daar een besprekingsplaats vindt oer Go George, is daar iemand wat ons met vertegenwoordigd maar het gebeur nooit.
Unawa ngela oko, unafuno upatala ono texi was eh Georgei efuna uba kata.
There is in behind this because they don't want to pay the George Taxi Association or the taxi drivers in George because they want to play games or to not to pay them well.
Die reden hi fuur is om het alle geen mensen wat taxi drivers is in George wil betalni of ala uknie ala gut wil betalni.
I Kwandam, i four hundred and fifty thousand.
Kwandam is four hundred and fifty thousand?
450.000.
Umaspala was eh Georgei, pa e kuba good business, ni ga i three hundred and fifty.
George municipality will only give you three hundred and fifty.
George municipality het hefene three hundred and fifty.
Unapa njo good business.
And you are out of business.
En dan zie je het bezigheid et.
In gawa it developmentale yo.
Is that called development?
Es det nou ontwikkeling.
In gawa ubatao Mandela, ilenda be fuuna maanwa developmenta.
Is this what Mister Mandela fought for or is this what Mister Mandela want as the development here?
Es det wofermineer Mandela gefaret en es det wat hij was ontwikkeling.
Singo no texi was eh Georgei, asi kolaanga, in de respete wa umaspala was eh Georgei.
As taxi drivers here in George, we are not happy at all, as taxi owners were not happy at all about what the municipality is doing to us.
Als taxi ayanoj hier in George is us glad nie gelukkig met wat die municipality aan ons doen.
Si buza umbuza, eh kapal ba ni ke one point six million, eh Georgei, ni ga i three fifty, singo no texi, senza indoye one.
In Cape Town, they got one point six million, but here in George, we only got three hundred and fifty thousand rand, but you are doing the same job.
En koopstadlet le eempenses miljoen ontvang ma in hier in George ney three hundred and fifty thousand maans den precies is af de werk.
Tau ti aufu upunga labusiness, ufuna okomita kunya nepas ba i three hundred and fifty ingi, umaspala uti agazo kunika ipemit, ya ikutai taxisiaku.
When you are saying to the municipality, you don't want to get out of this business, you want to compete with the bus taxi industry because if you look at this three hundred and fifty thousand, it's not enough at all, the municipality will chase you away.
Wanneer die municipality kan, zal je duiden waar je af, wanneer die three hundred and fifty thousand, dat is duiden van je niet niet genug ni, ons competier uak met bus drivers. Please conclude your question, see if you leave a slide.
Indebesitela, si kometen la ye, siya ifunai developmenti ak, but nongo laslo was patalanayo three hundred and fifty.
It's not that we are against about this development, but we want fairness in regard with this.
Het is glad niet, dat is teen er die ontwikkeling is ni ons sultnet finaliteit er meer.
Agwesbi, agwesbi.
Lastly?
Umaspala was eh Georgei, ipemit, uko George, uama kwe yo ngayindaw, tinabasa tembaletu, au kwazu ngelakondaw sabanda bam shopi, aban da bam nyama, fuuna uba she, kuistladre stiles nomkatango.
The other problem that you are encountering is in regard with the permits, the Go George had to go everywhere, but in regard with our route which is Tembaletu, we are restricted because you'll find out our black people, we are unable to pick them up in all other areas because there are places that have to go, I mean the Go George had to take the whites, but our Tembaletu had to be restricted in where they are supposed to go.
Die ander probleem wat ik heet is ook met die permit, als je kijkt naar Go George, hela kan oor alsterjen beweeg, maar ons wordt beperkt met waar ons kan beweeg en wie ons kan neem.
Aban da waranau Go George, ibes koteela, kawa namplange ba pete ku Go George, inga ma kuetaka umaspala.
The people who are running the Go George are the ones who were discussing, who were in discussion in regard with this, but now they are the one who are owning this industry.
Ik was deze tijd story mensen wat in de sprekingsgetreid met Go George, maar nou vind je dat diezelfde mensen is wat nou hier in de stree besit.
Siakela ukspan dele, ne tenda, is kobe kapa.
Please, we also need you to even investigate the tenders which are happening there.
As a belief ons frage, die onderschiks zal installen die tenders wat die.
Siakela umi, siakas.
Please stop with those buses, the Go George.
I was believe opmedi besser Go George. Thank you for the five questions, I'm going to ask the deputy minister, Manama Mela first to respond and he'll be followed by by deputy minister Masuku and deputy minister Massina, thank you.
Waar danki, ik ga nou voor adjeank minister Manama Mela vragen om de prik te leveren, hij zal gevolgd worden hier adjeank minister Masuku.
Thank you very much program director. I want to focus on the questions that relates to youth development.
Waar danki, program director, ik wil claimle op die vragen wat focus op die ontwikkeling van de jech.
Engos simpartinku, want di fuuna uko teta, imi ba ekapasela ulucha.
As the, both the ministry in the presidency and the department of planning, monitoring and evaluation, we have undertaken a national youth policy whose intention is to explain governments commitments for the next five years on youth development.
Als die ministerie in die presidency en ook die departement van monitierung en evaluering het ons beleid daar gesteld wat de verdeidelijking geef van ons, benadering tot jech ontwikkeling voor die volgende vijf jaar.
Omabini amasebe apaki ofisi, kam mongameli, abek inzela eka usetjenzwanga, ayo kleminiaka mitshano, kuwa laselaka kulu, uko puto la impuno zolu cha.
It is quite unfortunate that when we did consultations throughout the whole country and had a national consultative conference, the provincial government of the Western Cape refused to send young people to go and participate at the national consultative conference.
Het is waar ongelukkig dat toen ons oorlijkplekingsgevoer het recht oor die land in, in de nationale oorlijkplekende conferentie gehowet om hier die zaak te bespreken, de Westkaapsregering gewaierd om jong mensen naar daar die conferentie toe te steen.
In fact, the premier of the Western Cape wrote to me saying that the youth of the Western Cape have been consulted enough and there's no need to consult them any further.
Inderdaad, in die premier van die Westkaap aan waar je schrijving gericht, en van merkezese daar al genoeg met die jech van die Westkaap oorlijk gepleeg is en dat daar geen verder het moet net daarin is om het oorlijk te pleegni.
So I agree with one of the participants who said that there are some in the local and provincial government who do not care about youth development.
Zoiets hem samen het één van die deel mensen wat gesaid, daar sommige mensen is in die plaslike en ook die provinciale regering wat niet eindelijk omgehe oor jech ontwikkeling ni.
We have reached an agreement with the South African local government association Salga that all municipalities will set up local youth offices so that those offices serve the needs of young people.
Onsete oor einkoms angegaan met die Afrikaanse Plaslike Regeringsorganisatie, sa pro dat alle municipalities jech kantooren op zal richten zodat daar die kantooren dan zal omzien naar die behoeftes van de jong mensen.
It is said that it is only ANC municipalities in the Western Cape which have hit that call, which have implemented the local youth offices and are working with the National Youth Development Agency to bring services to young people.
Het wordt gesaid dat het net die ANC beherde municipalities in die Westkaap is wat gewoorgige heet aan hier die oproep en wat die jech kantoor opgericht is en wat met die Nationale Jech Ontwikkelingsagence kap samwerk.
This has also led to the NYDA spending more money by sending out trucks to communities, to farms and to rural areas to provide those services which should essentially be provided through the local youth offices.
Dit is ook daar toegeleide in de Nationale Jech Ontwikkelingsagence kap, vrachtmooters uitstier naar die plaslike gemeenschappen en aan die landelijke gebieden en naar die plaatsen toe om daar die diensten te leveren wat uit eindelijk eindelijk dieer die jech kantooren bij de municipalities geleverd beoorde word.
I must emphasize that we will continue to provide the services through the NYDA which looks at or focus at giving youth businesses grants to start their businesses or cooperatives, which also provides the scholarship, the Solomon Matlangu scholarships, which is for young people who want to further their education at university or at FET colleges, career guidance and many other services which the NYDA continue to provide irrespective of the challenges that were faced with with regards to the cooperation from the provincial government of the Western Cape.
We talk proclaim to naar die Nationale Jech Ontwikkelingskap zal voortgaan met die verskaffing van ondersteuning, financiële ondersteuning aan bezigheden voor jong mensen en dan ook aan beerse wat de jong mensen beskikbaar gesteld wordt en dan ook aan verdere inlichting en ons gaan voortgaan om dat te doen ten spijt van die feit dat ons niet noodwendig samenwerken krijg van de municipalities ni.
What the president has said is that for the next five years, the ministry in the presidency will be responsible for issues of youth development, which means Minister Jeff Hadeb and myself have taken up responsibility on youth development issues and in provinces, we expect the offices of the premier and also at local government, the offices of the mayor to take responsibility on youth development issues.
Wat die president gesaid is dat die met de serie nie presidency en dat is ik en minister Jeff Gadeb verantwoordelijkheid zal aanvaar voor jech angeleent heerde en dan ook in die kantooren van die premieres zal hela ook verantwoordelijkheid aanvaar voor jech angeleent heerde en dan ook in die kantoor van die burgermeser op plaslike regeringsvlak zal haar verantwoordelijkheid aanvaar word voor jech angeleent heerde.
The national youth policy which will be signed by the end of this month which is April, will be implemented by each and every sphere of government, whether any political party likes it or not, whether they agree with the ANC or not, it will be a policy by young people, for young people and we will ensure that the Ministry of Monitoring and Evaluation monitors the implementation of that youth policy even and including here in the Western Cape.
Die Nationale Jech beleid wat ondersteekt zal worden voor de einde van april, dat is hier in maand, en geïmplementeerd zal worden zal geïmplementeerd wordt, die er elke enkele regeringsinstelling, ongeacht welke politieke partijen beheren daarvan is of niet en of hela daarvan hou of niet, en die departement van monitierung en evaluering zal monitering doen om te verzeker dat daar die beleid wel geïmplementeerd wordt.
The youth of the Western Cape cannot suffer just because a political party wants to treat the Western Cape as a federal government, thank you.
De jech van die Westkaap kan niet lein net om dat de politieke partijen die Westkaap, die Westkaap als een federale regering valantiere, danki.
Thank you very much program director and to appreciate the opportunities to interact with the people of this municipality.
Waar danki voor die prik wat ik geleveret en ook voor die interactie met de mensen.
South Africa has got one development plan that is adopted by all of us, which is the NDP.
Set of got een plan wat hier amel en forest in de zie Nationale Ontwikkelingsplan.
Inside it, there's what we call national growth path, which seek to look at economic activities that are going to exploit our natural resources for the benefit of the people.
In benere Nationale Ontwikkelingsplan wordt sekrempente vervat der die ondersteuning van die ontwikkeling inig bereik van de obronne.
And the NGP says when we plan, we must look at the natural resources of the particular place and see how do skills of the people fit into that and how we can use that to develop people.
Die plan is ook zo uitresseerd dat. and this can be used to help the people.
Our role as economic development is to ensure that those government departments, right from municipality up to national, do exactly that.
And this is our responsibility to see that the departments and municipalities are working together. This municipality does not have minerals, I am aware, but we have agriculture, which
is key in terms of that call, and there is tourism, that is key in terms of that call. And currently, we have got ocean economies, that has been announced by the president. So we are not kind of surprised when we see that the integration of municipalities were influenced by these resources. Unfortunately, we had understood integration of municipalities as part of the tool of integrating society, as the NDP says. And we are told every day, and I had promised the emissaries here from this province, that I am going to come and visit and see these good lessons that they are talking about.
And we were told that youth development here is in advance because there is some incentive taxes that has been set aside to assist youth in these areas. When it is for us to tell that there is specifically a incentive for youth development.
We are surprised that now we are here, we hear a different story.
Now it is very surprised that we are here and that we are hearing a different story.
The BRT stands for Bus Rapid Transport.
The BRT stands for Bus Rapid Transport.
And Bus Rapid Transport falls under the program that we have put as national government to address all infrastructure problems that we have in the country, including energy. This BRT, or any infrastructure, we introduce it to use it as a tool to address social ease like racial divide and lack of access of people to work. So when we hear that you have taxis, who are a participant in taxi industry, we have another color, who didn't participate in that, it pains us because it is not in the spirit of the National Development Plan.
If it is not part of the initiative, it is a problem.
And it pains us when we hear that the process seemingly has been exploited in such a way that it benefited some people and promoted corruption.
And it is for us to know that your corruption is being avoided, if it is not part of the project, it is a problem.
The National Development Plan is clear on this matter, that corruption must be limited, otherwise if you have corruption within any state institution, it is going to undermine the development of the people.
The National Development Plan is very important, and it is not undermined, everything that is in the plan.
We are interacting with municipalities and provinces to implement this program, this program that I am talking about at a national level. But it looks like we must actually put a serious eye on this municipality to check all aspects within their development processes, IDP.
I would like now to talk about all of the BRT.
Because there will be a lot of development on the side of agriculture, that will include agro-processing, there will be a lot of development in the oceans, where there is going to be a lot of development in those particular areas, including manufacturing and opportunities for skill development.
If it is not part of the project, it is not part of the land, and it is a waste of effort.
And if we as government, from national to the municipality, were not aligned, then it means that we are going to be sitting with apartheid legacy even after we have implemented this project. So ourselves, together with the presidency, together with DTI, agriculture and all other economic cluster departments, we are going to make sure that we are going to be focusing on this, especially ourselves as the Department of Economic Development.
Our department is specific to the presidency and all other departments that are focused specifically on the BRT.
We shall speak to cooperative governance in terms of the issues of office, and we shall also interact with agriculture on issues relating to land.
And we will talk about all the departments of the government of the regulation, and also about the Department of Landbau, about the ground.
Personally, I am going to consider having an INBISO to come and have a thorough discussion on these matters.
Personally, I would like to have an INBISO, to have a debate about the request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Program Director, and my colleagues in the executive. I think the first issue to be raised is that South Africa is a unitary country. The Western Cape government must be reminded unequivocally that South Africa is one country.
The first thing that I will say is that South Africa united states.
It can be that there are national laws that are not implemented in the Western Cape and continues to deprive our people opportunities.
That can be, that national law is not being enforced in the West Cape, and that is learned from our people.
Economic development is a national imperative. All of us must implement and improve the lives of citizens.
Economic development is of national importance, and that is why we need to do it.
The ruling party has called for the radical socio-economic transformation to change the lives of ordinary citizens, in particular the poor.
All here, the development opportunities, need to be used to make our people in a better position of status.
Like the Deputy Minister of Economic Development have said, projects like Go George BRT should be owned by former taxi bosses, not by government.
All the people who belong to the Go George project, and they need to see it.
We want to say to the people of Western Cape, in particular here in the Southern Cape, that...
We want to say to the people of Western Cape, in particular here in the Southern Cape, that... We want to say to the people of the West Cape, in particular here in the Southern Cape, that...
The national government have promised the people of South Africa to roll out 6 million work opportunities. You too deserve a share of that number.
We want more than 6 million opportunities to give to us, and we would like to have a part of that.
We will work with the Department of Public Works to ensure that you too in George and here in this municipality do benefit, because you have been ignored by the Western Cape government.
And we want to make sure that we are blessed, and we are blessed, and we are blessed, and we are blessed. And we want to make sure that we are blessed, and we are blessed, and we are blessed.
We will also work with our colleague in the presidency to ensure that the NYDA bring these work opportunities to the youth of Southern Cape in general.
And so we will work to make sure that the National Youth Development Agency works together with the West Cape to bring specific...
The national departments provide a number of infrastructure grants to all municipalities, including here in the Western Cape.
The National Department of Government develops a number of infrastructure grants to all municipalities, including here in the Western Cape. We hope that the government of George Municipality provides services to ordinary citizens, as we expect as the national government. And we will, we will work for the municipal administration, to investigate whether or not all the grants that have been given benefits ordinary citizens in terms of infrastructure rollout in the Western Cape. And we are, we are not kind of surprised when we see that the integration of municipalities were influenced by these resources.
Unfortunately, we had understood integration of municipalities as part of the tool of integrating society, as the NDP says.
And we are told every day, and I had promised the emissaries here from this province, that I am going to come and visit and see these good lessons that they are talking about.
And we are, we are not kind of surprised when we see that the integration of municipalities were influenced by these resources.
Clean audit is a principle of good governance. It must be encouraged as long as it is linked to service delivery to ordinary citizens.
It must be encouraged for as long as it is linked to service delivery to ordinary citizens. As I conclude, Program Director, the people of Western Cape, they have an opportunity as we go towards 2016 local government, to vote for the popular government that cares about their interests, and that is the government of the African National Congress. Thank you very much. Since we are the top leaders, I would like to say, since we are the municipal regerings committee, we need the people of the West Cape to vote for the party that we are supporting, and this is the government of the ANC.
Thank you. May I just remind the deputy ministers, this isn't a political bashing session, this is about connecting with the people of this province, and I would ask that you keep your political agendas aside and focus on the questions that the people are asking you.
Thank you for the minister. Bij dankje kan ik net voor die minister heren en her. Dit is niet een politieke speelbal sessie is die maar dat het de gelehntheid is om die klacht van die mensen aan te wer. Zo kom ons respect hier, dit dank je.
May we go on? We can move on to the first person, thank you. Yes, I'm hearing you, thank you.
Mag eens het blijf voort gaan en ik wil eens blijf die eerste persoon aanwer.
Can our ANC members please keep quiet while our people of the public speak? Thank you.
Kan ons leiders blijf stillblyt de waldi public nou praat?
I'm listening.
I want to thank this opportunity that was provided to me so that I can speak out about what, about my problems.
Ak wil graaf van ihre gelehntheid gebraik mag wat aan mijn geheer wordt zo dat mijn problemen kan praat.
Sometimes we are happy about the ANC government because we are able to stand here and say what, what we want and what we don't want.
Oos is bij hier dankbaar voor die ANC regering want ons kan niet staan en ze war voor ons dankbaar is en wat ons wilen en wat ons nibeleni.
I want to talk about the transport system here in George, especially the transport that have to take kids from different areas so that they can go to school from the areas that like Tembaletu and so on.
Die kwestie wat ak graaf wil anruck is verfuur voor alie in George en meer specific voor kinders en om hulle van hulle verschaya ariest de verfuur schoolte.
The plea that we have is that the municipality doesn't give us permits so that we can transport those school children.
Die pleidwe wat ons wil rechani is die municipality geen die voor ons die permitte voor ons om ihre schoolkinders te verfurni.
We are also happy to hear about how does this BRT works because now we are informed that we are supposed to own it. We are not supposed to be employed because it belongs to us.
En oos is bij blijdert ons zo klaren gekrijt voor die BRP project want nou wird ons dat ons dit eindelijk moet beset en nien daarvoor moet werken nie, want het bewerd eindelijk aan ons.
We are even unable to take the old people to pass by PKN pay because we are going to be arrested and the fine will be 7500.
En ons kan yes die al mensen verfuren aan PKN pay te nie want oos word buttes opgeef van 7500 rand.
The, the other problem that we are encountering is this permit thing and what they are saying is that it's the government who are saying that we mustn't give you the permits. They are just threatening us that it's the government of the ANC while we know that it's the DA who is doing that.
Nou wat aan ons geseerd word, wanneer ons die permitte gewaarde wo dan ziel nee doet in verder dat sie regering wat waarum dat te doen de weil ons eindelijk werd het die DA wat waar.
They are trying to destroy the ANC. That's why the ANC is not getting the vote that they are supposed to get here in the Western Cape.
Alle probeer die ANC van kant mag en dit is weg voor me ANC en nie alle stemer krij hier in de westkaapne.
The last thing that I want to mention is in regard with the tenders because we just see people working and having the tenders. We don't know how did they get those tenders because we also have an own bus transport. So we don't know why are these tenders owned by some and not by others.
Die ana kwestie wat ons wil anruck is in verband met tenders want oos zien dat partij mensen die tenders ontfangen, lakerdome kan wer. Maros weet nie precies hoe komt dit aan hier mensen toegeken word nie.
Thank you very much, can we move on to the next person?
Bij dankje, kan ons bewegen naar die folgende vraag.
Laat mij eerste gelehntheid gebraik maken om voor alle jullie te saluer kameraden.
Honorable members, why I am standing here is just to come and mention about the oppression that we are receiving in the area here where we are staying.
Achbar leder die redukom ik hier sta dus over jullie te kom vertel van die onledricking wat ons erfaren de gebied waar ons woon.
In that area where I stay, we have Petro SA.
En die gebied waar ik woonachtig is, is daar Petro SA.
Petro SA that has arrived in Mosul Bay, but they do not conduct any training on the children from Mosul Bay.
Petro SA is gevestigd in Mosul Bay maar hul doen geen opleiding voor kinders in Mosul Bay nee.
What I see in Petro SA, if you are talking about a child from Mosul Bay or George, it appears as if you are really talking about an animal.
Waar het voor mij so voorkom bij Petro SA ze praat van een kind van Mosul Bay of from George dan like dat so je praat uwe deer.
What they have done recently, I was going with members, youth members, they gave them a work or job for six months and I told them, I said, "I will never accept that."
Wat ik onlangs gedone is, is ik het samen jong mensen gegaan en hulle het voor hulle werk gelehnt hier de voor zes maanden gege en ik het voor hulle geseerd het ik dit nooit zal anvaar nie.
Development there at Petro SA is known that it is something belonging to the area, Devon area.
Die ontwikkeling daarbij Petro SA, dit is bekend dat dit is iets iets is wat bewerd aan die Devon gebied.
What we are asking our government is to go to Petro SA, ask on our behalf, why are our children not being employed there whilst they do possess matrix certificate?
Wat ons van ons regering verzoeken is op naar Petro SA te gaan en over hulle te gaan vragen, hoe komt word ons kinders niet daar een dienst geneem nie? Want hulle het wel matrix certificate.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You can work with mats when you are working a boiler making. But welding job does not require any math methods. Lastly, let me just leave this message. Petro SA, I tell all these people, there are opportunities of working there, but they are employing people from Devon. I call upon these people, they should all come to me and join me.
Ek wil graaf voor alie die mensen zeg dat daar werk gelehnt hier bij Petro SA is maar alie nie mensen van Devon en dienst. Alle moet die mensen wat hier is moet dan mee te komen en hulle moet bij mij ansleit.
Thank you, can we move on to the next person?
Honorable Deputy Chairperson of the NCP, before I proceed, I would like to bring on the attention something that I feel really unhappy with.
Achbar had jank voersitter, ak wil net graaf iets onder die aandacht breng iets wat mij bij ongelukkig mag.
I've observed this yesterday and just a few minutes ago it happened again and it's getting and I'm telling you it's getting to me and I'm getting angry with staff of the NCP, as well as members of the NCP, as well of the national legislature, who think that they are here for themselves. This session is for the people of the Southern Cape to raise their issues. A researcher sitting that side, this lady, when the honorable deputy minister Messina was dealt with by this lady who is the co-chair of the session, stood up and clapped hands, I feel aggrieved that an official of the NCP shows her clear political colors in outzurung and I'm telling you, hulle gaan zien wat die mensen moet outzurung van hulle gaat ma. Deputy Chair, I call upon you to protect the public of the Southern Cape by the co-chair because it is clearly that she is showing her political colors on stage whilst a minister address the people of the Southern Cape ons wil oncese. I call upon you to address this matter before I proceed asking my questions.
No, no, thank you very much. What's your name again?
I'm Brian Blau.
Brian?
Brian Blau, yeah.
Okay. In requesting me to respond or address this particular matter, may you, may you first do me a favor?
Yes.
By just withdrawing your, the extent to which you addressed me by even pointing me by a finger.
I humbly withdraw that, sir.
Thank you very much. Um, I would take the point, I would take the point that the officials from the National Council of Provinces, of course, are here to assist the, the, the house in order to have a smooth operation insofar as this activity is concerned. Um, we do understand that we do all have political interests, we come from different political parties, we are politically differently orientated and all those sorts of things. Insofar as staff is concerned, I would request the staff to restrain themselves from engaging or giving indicators of which political side do they belong or political party they want to belong. But equally so, I cannot therefore call on members, on members, whether it be a, a, a program director or whatever, as a member, I cannot say to a member that refrain from expressing your political view or political posture or your body posture as a form of indicating your political, um, uh, 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 influence or whatsoever. But yes, of course, it would be inappropriate for a program director standing here in the podium to then expressively show her political allegiance and so forth. It will be incorrect if the program director, because this is a democratic alliance member, this member is from the ANC, we all know that. But if he's, he or she stands here and directs the program, she must direct the program. But the manager of this podium, I cannot say to her that don't even smile, don't even laugh, don't even say anything. It would be inappropriate because we are all members of political parties and we are here representing the people who might have voted us in different ways. So yes, of course, when it comes to staff, I agree with you. That one should not happen. But when it comes to members, it will not be correct for me to then say to members, do not show your political, um, uh, body posture and so forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my, I've got two questions.
Before you start, can I just ask ladies and gentlemen, we will not get through enough of our, our, our community members if we continue to veer off the topic. So may I please ask that you remain on topic to have the opportunity for your deputy ministers to be able to make meaningful comments around those requests?
Ak wil net de pleidwe erechten, amal is blijf per die thema salau en nie van die thema sal awijk nie want anders ter gaan ons nie genug sommige tijd hee om der alie sprekers van die gemeenschap te kan gaan hee.
Thank you. Um, I've got two questions. Before I ask the questions, I just want to give very quick statistics to give an indication before I ask the questions. Our district IDP indicates that only 26.4% of the youth in this region is economically active, whilst 35.6% of the youth makes up the total population of our region.
35% van ons strek is uitgemog uit hier maar slags 26.4% van hulle is actief in economische ontwikkeling.
The district IDP goes further to state that the absence of youth in the economy creates, or creates a serious threat to economic growth in this region and it is on the basis that I'm going to ask. And it is on the basis that I'm going to ask the following questions.
Kau lucha lunga bandakanyeki kwezo kokosho, londo isbonakalisza indo yokba i kona inaki enovela, malunga ne zo kokosho.
Um, the question, the first question is, I would recommend very strongly to the three ministers, deputy ministers sitting here, that the following be seriously looked at. One is that a regional economic development agency be established for this region that will look at SME development in cooperation with SIDA, CFA and those type of peristators and state institutions, access to finance, trade and investment, investors incentives, and looking at specific special economic zones in the form of agri-processing as well as manufacturing, with a key focus on employing the youth and assisting the youth to become economically active within this region.
Ndizauteela indo yokba ukala sele es indozilandela yo, umbandela we SME ukuchoke amashishini amanin, kuchongwe indo yokba aba kufikele lwanjani na wimali ezao kasa lo mashishini, kuchongwe malunga noyala maali malunga ne zo hwebo, kuchongwa uye malunga no lucha, oluso bakona ku mashishini indo yokba ba ya bandakanye ekana, kuchongwe malunga na weyonge indo echonge ne ne za kono, malunga no kutiswa koloucha, ne zo kokosho.
And that this specific regional economic development agency be funded by national government, typically as where the provincial government of Gauteng have got GIDA, Gauteng Economic Development Agency. We propose that we seriously look at creating a similar economic structure for this region to attract investment into this region to make sure that we create job opportunities for the unemployed.
Na lapa kufuneke sismisele indo yokba amatu ba oyala maali sia wavez, ukwenze la abo ba nomda oyala imali apa bangavalelegi ukwenze ba okokosho lukule kulumandla.
I would also recommend to the ministers that they seriously relook at the current allocation of local economic development funding for municipalities, which normally goes now through the MIG system. We would request that you get a specific grant to municipalities that had become a vote item for local economic development for local government instead of running it through MIG. Thank you.
Nditeela kubeko isbonelelo es koyo, komaspa la esisa wonge ta ukutisolo kokosho, ukwenze indo yokba izindozambele pambili, malunga no kutisolo etre kokosho kulumandla.
Thank you. Moving on, yes.
Amanda! People are poor. Amanda! Thanks people, the demand is bullisale, the go sandi le maseko.
Thank you people, allow me to greet you, I'm Sandile Maseko.
Danki mensen, laat me toe om julle te groet, ek is Sandile Maseko.
Isuka glamma ngwase Mossel Bay.
I am coming from Mossel Bay.
Ik kom van Mossel Bay.
Di zo representa ama farmer na basla.
I am here to represent farmers and also the residents.
Ek is hier om boeren en ook die inwoners te vertegenwoordigen.
Di ne cases in bi, ne ndisizelayo ukuni basla ngapambi.
I have two cases that I wish to refer to the members.
Daas twee gefallen wat ek vandaag graag naar die leerder wo verwaai.
Eyokali case, da, da, go twenty-ten, ukfa katele brandje free state, da bulaweli akuzamezi sixty-six.
Twenty-ten on the death of Terre Blanche in the Free State, sixty-six of my pigs were killed.
Twenty-eighteen, met die dood van Terre Blanche, die free state, zesentwintig van mijn vaker doodgemaak.
Die bulawela ngmakela noa Andre teleblance.
It's my neighbour who killed them, his name is Andre Teleblance.
Is my beerman wat die doodgemaak is, the name is Andre Teleblance.
En fa kogosan ek beko ngeto, kom volondo.
Thereafter, there was no assistance whatsoever that I could get as a result of this.
Da na was zag geen bijstand, hoe genaamd, wat ik nie handel kon krijgen, is gevolgd van hierdie acties nie.
Weyenzeka yo ngani tabana kutwa ne parlament, tinabandu, snabo nabandu bangongo teke sauni nabandu nisfa ke maplasi, pa duabanda bamso.
What happens if there are quarrels? We are the most safaras, as the parliamentarians has put us on the farms with white people.
Ontwat nou gebied is ons, die mensen, wat die meest ley, angesin die parlementse leerder ons op die plaats, samen met mensen gesitterd.
L S B in die banje, wey pokwe, two, three months ago, esy twenty-seven.
Three months ago, my goats were also taken, twenty-seven of my goats.
Maspa.
By the municipality official.
Twee maanden geleden, esiewentwintig van mijn pokwe, ook die municipaliteit regever.
Di landelem fa kwa zo kwa ngoko, tandi fik S P C A moosil bay, kufuni thirty-two thousand rand.
I followed them immediately when I arrived at S P C A offices at Mossel Bay, they demanded an amount of thirty-two thousand rand.
Ek tovill, ek tele toe opgesporend ook, die D V V kantoor in Mossel Bay krijt tovra, alle voor mij een bedrag van tweeënddarrig duizend rand.
Kreeg daar nie stoppe, lo mooi, ja, okalo zo die binnenloop na.
I also appeal to you intervene on our behalf and stop this exercise or this practice with immediate effect.
Ek dino berupopi, tri as blif namens ons en in stark hierdie praktijk met onmiddelke en werken kreden.
Abonos net akor en gasnet, apatina wisi kentaya, akottinginwezinjegoloto.
Where you could help us, we accept your assistance, but it shall be born in mind that we are now sick and tired because of these occurrences.
Wa julle ons kan help, zal ons het paar deer, maar het moet een gedachte gehouden worden, dat ons nou sikkens status van hierdie verschinsels.
En indweni bona yingong boja bandwa ni katalela.
Another thing that I see, you have no attention for the anger of the people.
Iets anders wat ek waarniem is dat ie geen geduld het voor die voeden van die mensen nie.
Ngasi kala, sanenza same tinga, eisenwa, ektesa ye bandu lulo, nisbizela ama police aspetenge getiakess.
When we complain, you do exactly what was being done during the apartheid era, calling police and they would fire tear guesses on us.
So can I ask you, keep your question to economic development and youth, please?
Banirons kla, dan dui julle precies wat die aparte trug hier in Kudunite, julle rupi polici, en julle skito ponsmo tranchas.
Okay. Eh, basla leo na ndobe nfunuikaitrisa, apo ukuni basla ngapambili, yokba na inkokele zetu, tinabandu bangaba shali, bammele indo zoluundu, sik traditional hilas, na kweznyeneseznyenisenzipo kochispaner, zamapolotik.
Officers, then front, I want to tell you that what is used, we are being used as if we are shifting spanners.
Politics.
In politics.
Ek wil vir julle se, wat die jeers ons word gebreek, susepobi jan, spanner en die politik.
Okay, can I move on to the next member? I think there are a lot of people who want to talk about specific issues around economic development.
Thank you, thank you.
Next person? Thank you, we're moving on to the next person, please?
Danki ons.
Yes, you may start.
Uh, hooie madag, Amal. Um, my name is Ralph Standard, Reverend Ralph Standard. I'm the chairperson of the Southern Cape Social and Economic Development Forum. The Southern Cape Social and Economic Development Forum is part of the Western Cape Social and Economic Development Forum. And in all the other regions, there are also economic development forums.
Die Saedlike Kaop Sociale en Ontwikkelingsforum is een van die grootste forums hier in die Saedka.
Uh, we have found that it is extremely difficult for black business and SMEs to do business in the Southern Cape and also in the Greater Western Cape.
Si kufumanisa kunzi ma indo yokba amashishini amanin, uye nama shishini aba ndabamnyama, akubegi no shishine kulumandla wase Southern Cape, na wincho na koloni i pele.
Ons vinden het bijna moeilijk als om bezighaite duniere in die Saedka.
I'm gonna make two illustrations and then I will get to what I'm recommending.
Ekantwee illustrasies magen, ansela kombe wat ek anbefiel.
Ndizaobe ka imi ba imi bi ni ukusenditase isn du lulo endi saunazo.
Uh, one case is Mr. Jan Johannes April, uh, he's a mechanic that lives in George.
Die eerste in is van meneer Jan April, en hij is woenachtig in George.
Umba endsa ukalanga, umbaga Jan George, Jan April, o wase George, ungma keniki kona.
Uh, he's a hardworking man, God fearing, a pillar in the community.
Hij is een moederwerkter, kinderge, en hij is ook een pilar in die gemeenschap, en hij werk bij hard.
Umdo sebenzanzima ka kulu lo.
His hands are standing wrong for nothing. But the problem is that the George municipality, they came to him and they say that he was not allowed to do business from his house.
Nou, say anders dan, verabsolut niks verkeerd nie, maar nou die George municipality nou om toe gaan, en vormes say hij maak nie bezighaite van zij safurni.
Eyonan ngage kukba komaspa la wase George, uti aga quazu sebenze la endli niake.
He is already trained more than thirty young people in terms of how to do different mechanic work.
Hij tal meerest dardig mensen opgelei, om te wees hoe mier die werk te doen.
Ukfuni se ulucha oluninzi indo yokba bangenzanjani na ukukkenike.
Master April then went to the municipality and said that it's fine, I will rezon my house if that is what I need to do. Just to find that they say, but it's no use going through the process because we are not going to approve your rezoning.
Uye wabo, uye wabo nakkali indo yokba kadeku zanya ukutandwa umsaba, indo yokba akondo angetakalanga yokuba nalon kubo in kubo nje ebesa ukwenzwa yamsitaisha, kotoa ye na kbonakalba akazunetaka na klon kubo.
Master April, as a breadwinner, he suppose he must provide bread put on the table for his family, but now the municipality is saying that he can't do that.
Meneer April is een breadwinner van zijn familie nae, is die een wat ko so bi toefel met set, maar nou serie municipality daar kan detni me feader duni.
Uye oye nam tu sebenzanzima, ukusapoloake ukwenze indo yokba kutotwe ikati esiko, kotoa taksen seka o, uye abo pelelege izanla nenya.
The municipality took him to court, to the high court. Uh, Master April, he couldn't afford it, so he lost his case. And now he's under words to being evicted from his house because of just trying to put bread on the table.
Die municipality het meneer April naar die wiggeraag hof geneem, en omdat nie geld gehad het nie, hij natuurlijk zij sock verloor, en hij gaan nou uit zijis uitgeset word.
Uye wasiuwakwinkuntla es pakamileyo zamachala, lamlaxa itala, ngokoke ucho ngenene indo yokba akutro endli.
Uh, the other case is there in Nice, you have guys selling golf balls.
Die ander shock is door, Nice na het julle mans wat golfballer verkoop.
The municipality arrests them and they put them together at one spot.
Die municipality terla amal nou geteister, en toen nou later na een plek, sam.
Komaspa la uyeke waba tibanisa klomba nu pete yo ken wo.
Uh, since last year, December, another person has moved into the spot where they were chased away. And that person is still doing business without being harassed by the municipality.
En nou sederd verleden jaar, december, het nieuwe persoon nou in beweg, en jijzy plek waar alle wagen jahges, en hij doen nou bezighaite van dooraf, maar hij wordt nie geteister dere polici nie.
Ukso se la konyako peleyo, uye wakuchoye na glenda, kotoa kekwa fumanisaba, ukona omye umdu, oye wangena ye nakange aleke, usakubeke ange sebenza, glenda ben kutro kuyomne.
The question now is why do you allow one and chase the other one away? And the answer is very simple, it's the colour of the skin.
Nou, die vraa wat ek anevo stel is hoe kom jah, idan somiges wagen, somiges kom blae, en die antwoord saen ek baed, daar lak is ek leer van de fale.
Thank you.
Umba e omileyo kukba kuteni singa zu, patwangente la efana yo, omye yeke, omye akutro, londo itatiyle ai funimbuzo indo yokba iba laliya tetaa.
Thank you, your time is up, I'd like to open the floor now to the ministers.
Danki, taites verstrekken, ek wil nou oergen naar die panio.
I've not even come to what I...
So we arrived, everyone, two minutes to ask their questions.
Andi kate tinga lenton funutetangaayo.
To the deputy ministers, I'd like to find out which one questions you'd specifically like to answer that pertain to your portfolios and directorates. Um, I would assume that not all of you would answer every question.
En ja, dan ministers, ek graag uitvind welke specifieke vraa so evo beantwoord, wat verbande met die portefeuilles, ek ant, voor dat nie elke vraa met die portefeuilles te doen het nie.
Thank you very much.
Ngia bulle la kakul.
Bye, danke.
You know, sometimes when you listen to these things, you don't, you want to believe them.
Kamaya matu ba ka umame la lemi ba, uye unga funi, gelini klasa, no ku i kola elo.
Somtese semes na jiri dangalaisir, maar jie let nie aintlik gloo nie.
But you end up having force to start believing because the matter that was raised on the issue of the mechanic, there is a similar matter that I have, was reported to us with regard to insurances when they deal with African mechanics.
Lomba wo mu umto kanti moto, zbe umba onzalo, o kazwe yokuti ka kuzwa, ku ba kanti be moto.
Want die saak, wat, somtes voor die gedonging te gloo, wat, wat, wat jie word van die saak wat hier angesnees, word die motorwerker kinderge, is bije diezelfde as een ander saak, wat, wat aan ons geraporteer is, wat te maken het met verzekering, wanneer dit kom, weis hard motorwerker kinderges.
When I saw in the program that Honorable Vender will be here, I was very happy because I thought that we do a lot of consultation as government.
Ndite da wonge program, os tonpekle open eko, dakon basa kwenza, ingo kulelo, nenguvela, en ninsi, ente, gokwa lulu shul, lemi kee.
But it's unfortunate that I couldn't find him.
Teuk op program gezien, dat die achbar let, die zo geweet is, was ik bij opgewonde geweet van, ek het gedankonseloor leigpleeg, komi plaatelijke regering, maar dit is ongelukkig dat ek kom, echter nie kon vind nie.
Goelde shwa, kan kwa zanga komfwa.
Because all these, lots of complaints that we receive, they require a response. For example, the other one that I have just received is for a person that wanted to rent a house in one of the suburbs in Cape Town.
Olu totolo, imi basi fumenayo apa, imi ba bifale okupenda, omye nsa da kufumana, ngogo umdu obeketse indu, kwele lasakapa.
Bij van die klachten, so dat ons ontvanget, verkwelaangvurds, is bevoor wat die klachten wat ek zo passo ontvanget, dit te maken met iemand wat hij is, wil hier in Kaapstad.
When, when the agency, when you offered, the agency gave him all the things and they said to him, and I want to read it as a team, uh, you will pay thirty-nine thousand five hundred rand a month and will require a deposit of seventy-nine thousand for two months, of which the person didn't have a problem.
It's thirty-nine thousand five hundred, genyanga, kwa funwa is seventy-nine thousand, akabi na yo umdu lima.
Die agentskap keerf jou alle inlichtingen, ek let vorme brief geschrijf en ek wil het graag aanou. Ek let vorm gezet in die brief dat jij zal vereis word, om ewe hier van negenenddertig duizend vijfhonderd rand te betaal, en dan zal jie de positie van negenentwintig duizend rand ze twee maanden moet betalen. En die persoon het hier enfourig die die geld nie.
But last week, the person goes and he want to sign. And now the landlord says, I want a twelve-month advance payment.
Le wekipela yo waya umdu funa ukya ukpala sae, wat omye di funa intaulelo, yenyanga es idi shumelnesbi ni.
En aan laatens gaan die persoon, en die persoon wil die document gaan onderteken, maar dan serie, hij zei naar voor die persoon, hij dat hij het twaalf maanden voor uitbetaling wil he.
And indeed, how can we, how, how would we interpret that? Because the person happened now to present himself because I was speaking over the phone and here is he with a colour, a different colour.
Unga ingeda kanzani londo, ko ba umdu wa tetaa efone ni, wa velakese umdu wellene ukpala, oganyesha.
Wat hoe zal jie dit nou vertalk, want die persoon het voorien, word die telefoon onerhandlings getref met die andere persoon, maar nou, perske die persoon persoonlik, en aan sin, dan word zij stfeltle raak gezien.
Is this critical systemic racial responses to people that creates our problem? And we need to... And we need to attend to that.
Ngaki etalekango kobushanga, imeko ke esimele kuba simesya ikualaseela.
Dit is hier die kritische systemische rasverwante replik, wat voor ons problemen veroorzaken en ons moet het ansprek.
With regard to the Petro SA, we are going to speak to Petro SA and see what is it that we can do because it's an urgent of government.
Gokuma yala nomba wakua Petro SA, ubalulekele, yaya tinasa uketa, na wakua Petro SA isibono ukuti kusigenza ni na.
Den opzichte van Petro SA, ons gaan met Petro SA praten en zien wat ons kan doen, maar dit is de regeringsagenschap.
And we agree with the meeting that we need to have. And I think that the agenda should be, there is a development here. How are we going to have localization? How are we going to have local procurement? How are the local people going to interact with all the services that you require?
Ukko inku bela apo, funeka simbo neuba ukuya ukko kwan janina, ngaba ukka kamsheroano doketa, oliyakuenzwa ngabantu, lyakuwekeka janina.
En ik zem samen die vergaderen wat ga hem het woord aan ons moet praten over hoe ons die proces gaan verplastlik. Hoe gaan ons bij voorbeeld die plaatselijke gemeenschappen, die geplaatselijke gebied betrokken krijgen bij verkrijging en bij alle andere processen wat betrokken is bij die angeleidendheid.
And we might not talk about the current issues only. Let's talk about the plan overhead so that we can even structure our training if our youth has not to be trained.
Masiga koktringe es zalapak fuchane, masichonge si fulametos chonge, pambili, okokwanga ba kukko, lukke kesho, olmele ukkuenzwa kluchaletu, lukwasi ukva lenziwe.
En als meneer net praat, we reëerder geslagen, zin maar ons ook praat, we're plan gerichte benadering, zodat ons ons jeugd kan structureren, den opzichte van hun opleiding.
We also have a responsibility to economic development to make sure that the municipalities IDPs are responding to economic needs of a society.
Funeka skolasaleka uba, nezoko koswa infuno zalundu, esibono neukoba naso zia kualasaleka.
Als die economische ontwikkeling heeft ons ook een verantwoordelijkheid om te verzekeren de municipality te geïntegreerde ontwikkelingsplan replikt lever op de behoeftes van de mensen.
We appreciate the recommendation that has been made, but to emphasize that that is the duty of a municipality and its people and we are going to be using this as a base to assess the IDP of this, I mean the LED plan of this area.
Seasbulala es pakamise sensewa yo, kodama skanini seukoba, likanduva, likama siparangumba, obe mele ukuba ukualasaleka glonkon.
Ons word hier die voorzeil wat gemaakt is, maar ons beklimt toen ook weer eens dat er die municipality een verantwoordelijkheid is en ons gaan daarvan gebruik maken om die plaatselijke economische ontwikkeling in die municipality kan monitor.
Bylaws must be respected, but they must not be used as a tool to punish other people.
Imi tetu yasimakaya, imela kuba isse iksoni chwe, kotwa aywo, mainga sejenziswa, jengesko bo, sokoswa yabantu.
Municipale ordenances moet gerespecteerd worden, maar het moet niet gebruikt worden als een manier om mensen te strafnen.
You are free to interact with us at the department on any matter of local economic development if you want us to intervene and have an interaction with your...
Ni kululeke luba ni tetenati, ngayo yonge imiba niktabaselayo, elapa egushaleni kuendo.
Dit stand voor die freer, moet ons in contacten trekken met de departement van economische ontwikkeling en den ieder wil heerden ons met ingrijp wanneer het komt bij equities van economische ontwikkeling.
Should we not find them as we did today? We are not going to stop looking for other alternative to assist.
Okwanga baswa fumane jengoko ukubenjado namtsanje, asiumapu, sausbonesini sombululesgatatabate.
En die nozele nieftentjes wat ons vandaag doen het, dan zal ons je oppo om te zoeken voor alternatieve oplossingen.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to indicate that with all of these things that we have had today, some, well, in fact all of them, if you have a concern about a service delivery issue, if you have a concern about how you are being treated either in a police station or at home affairs or in a municipality, I advise that you call the presidential hotline and you give information about what your concern or complaint is.
Die tinga indoyokuba zonge es isindo zitetwe apas is vile, kwae uku bangaba ukufumana in ngaiki malunga na yo naipina impato mb, nokba ukufumana emapol seni ukanyeku maspala, ku zo zonge indawezneta ulundu, kuunye noni keselolo inkonzo, uku bangaba au fumaningente lefanele kleo, ikona inombolo yokungo epakumoga meri onozalela yona, apo unongeta kalakona, uikaze uibeke ikate lon ngaiki.
iets wat ik niet wil beklimt doen is, als jij er inige kwesties hebt, heeft zij of dit nou is uw behandeling wat je ontvang bij de politici staasie, bij de municipality, of heeft zij, ik kan die presidentiële noodline nummer schakel?
We have been doing both announced and unannounced visits in frontline service departments to ensure that services are given to citizens.
Sizkelele indawezninzi nama sebe amaninzi, amakrasamaninzi besil kaza ukelelo leetu, ngamanyamakrasabe singalkazi, kuba si funu kontindoyokba, inlela abantu abapatekanga yo, kuwe zankanda, nokba inkonzos nikeselwa ngentele la efanele kleo na.
Onze nou al gereeld, beplande en onbeplande besuchen afgeleid, om zeker te maken dat diensten wel gelever wordt.
We have been doing those visits obviously as a follow-up to some of the calls that have been made through the presidential hotline.
Sizikelele esanda unge nga esindo es yesas fumana, ukanye inombolo ez fumene yo kwabo bayebatsala imineba, ngoko ke besamula ndelela lomi ba.
En van jij de besucher wat ons afle, is natuurlijk wens opruft wat ons ontvangen der jij de presidentiële noodline.
Okay, the number to call is one seven seven three seven.
Uimi zileke inombolo na yo nisa itzalen.
One seven seven three seven.
Die nummer om te schakelen is ian siewe siewe dri siewe.
The last point which I wanted to indicate is that we can make no apology if the provincial government of the Western Cape did not come here to be part of this panel.
Asikwazu ku polisela i uchulmende wasen chona koloni, kuba engakange ezze apa, kuba bekufanelba, songe silapa ngapambi disa ukwazu pendula imi buzo yenu.
Dan wil ons niet van de politie anteken, ongsinds die weeskoapsregering, nie aan jij die panel wil uitmaken.
The reality is that we are elected as members of parliament and also appointed in the executive through our different political parties and if any of those political parties which are in government fails to come and account to the people, it cannot be our mistake. So the gentleman who spoke earlier on, yes, the chair of the NCOP responded, but I thought it's important that we indicate that we are here to engage with the people both as part of government but also deployed by our different political parties and there's no doubt that if a representative of the dear government was here, they were going to speak on behalf of the dear government.
Sinyuluenga abantu indoyokba sibela apa, indoyokba sibekuchulmende, basonyulela ukba sibese parlamente, so nyuluanga makela ngamakela, ngoko ke kufanele esibuzwe imi buzo siza ukpendula, onge umtu onyuluweyo ngabantu, ufanele abeko, ingakumbie iskeba esonyuluweyo indoyokba sizo melaa abantu, ngoko ke kunyanzeleki lekuli kunya indoyokba sizo fezeki salomsebenzuetu, indoyokba sizo melaa abantu siba pendule, njenga malungu anyuliweyo, sipinde sipendule, ngokwa makela kuba so nyuluenga makela ngamakela.
Ons wordt vergiss en ons uitvurende gesagte der ons onderschijre politieke partijen, maar wanneer ons die voorkomst doen kan ons niet terekenbaarheid hier, als hier ian van die politieke partijen nie hier den woord is neem.
So please don't blame us for being here, speaking on behalf of our government, blame those who ran away instead of having been here to come and talk to you.
Ne tani sanukomba imine ukutinis kikimisele, yi ani kwabo abantu bafanele ukbala apa baso pendula, kuba galoku umsebenzuabo ukkuenza londo, ai ukuni baleka.
Maar nou, als blif nie kwadrak voor die mensen wat aan de wael hier, is om hier te proeven, maar wie sederd kwad voor die mensen wat wach aarglepet?
Thank you very much, just to conclude, because my colleagues have covered other issues.
Ndjabulela kakulu, galen nga treba, kuba induetninzi sekeki we ndisauti kabadkabadjenge imiba etile.
Niet om af te slide, want mijn collega sietel andere kwesties reeds angrak.
There is a strong feeling from some amongst here that they appreciate the freedom brought by the ANC-led government, which makes them to be able to speak freely here today.
Kuya wabo nakala indoyokbango kukroze la kwendui indoyokba, uninzi lo abantu abala pa bayayfuyela indo abaisi selweyungongolo, indoyokba bakwazu tetango ku lekleo.
Daar is een woord deren hier vertegenwoordig, voor die ANC-regering wat mensen die vrijheid van sprake geven.
The issue of the scholar transport will be investigated because what we know is that the ANC-led government is now providing free scholar transport including meals in schools, that are no free schools throughout the country including here in the Western Cape.
Umba otibenene es tuti es tutavandwa na weskolo uza ukpanda, kuba uchulmende okokelewa i ANC, ukupa es tuti apine, akenseki se indoyokba abandwa na kaveseskolweni, bayas fumana is kaso, ngoko ke ukbalondo ANC is isai panda.
Die kwestie waar vervuur voor schoolkennis zal definitief onderschoekt worden, wanneer die ANC-regering biedt inderdaad vervuur voor schoolkennis, als ook gratis etes voor kennis in school.
We will investigate and take the matter forward of Petro SA and the continuous ignorance or ignoring of locals on expense of those who are coming from far and will ensure that the minister responsible for Petro SA does attend to this matter and will bring the matter to the community.
Umba we Petro SA siza ukualasela su ukpande nao, kuba galoku abantu abashala fuchane nalanda au, sikengindo yokba bekufanelekanga indoyokba, bachonge lewetkaleni kuoyue abantu abasuka kuti nao siza ukualasela su se pambin.
Ons al ook een onderschoekt moet install voor Petro SA, wat ik genoemd voor die kwestie waar werk en neemwoord van plaatselijke mensen en eerder gegevenwoord voor mensen wat van andere plekken komen.
The proposal to establish the Regional Economic Development Agency will take it forward.
Ia hende etongenene no putisolo kokoso, isau chonga lomba eu ku bele pambi.
En ons zal ook een voorstel van die Regional Development Agency verder neem.
We do agree with all the things that are being proposed to be dealt with at the level of the agents.
Seavumelanane es du lulo es pakamise wayo indoyokba, siza unzama ukleka indoyokba lonten bisu chonge.
Ons team somit alles wat jij de agenschap voorstal is.
But in order for this to happen quicker, we think that the Department of Small Business National must be able to come down to do that work because clearly, if you report to the province that is absent here today, it might take ages for these agents to find life.
Maar ons zal eerder vragen dat die Departement van Kleinsakondernehemings hina te komen, besuch komen afle, om daar die zaak verder te voeren, want als je kijkt naar die provincie wat vandaag nie insteendwoordig is hier nie, lijkt het als if het nooit opgelost kan worden.
Si fununkenseki sa uku se okukunga ambingo nyau lonno abu, indoyokba endawenyokba lonten bisu posse kuipondo, njengoko si wonba aliko, siza uzama ukpatangesanda zetu tina, sili sebe lesizwe, ai lepondo.
Through the Department of Small Business, so that we are very clear.
Ngokweka nde elo edi chongele ukanye isbe lchongeene nama shishini amangin.
Die Departement van Kleinsakondernehemings netel dus diedlak is door.
The last point that we must emphasize because this is not the first time we attend community meetings.
Umba okbe la enfunu ku kapazela, kuba ngaba aykokala kunge okbe lasmane sisiva izindo es lotshabo.
Die laatste punt wat ik niet wil beklimt doen, maar dit is nie eerste keer wat ons gemeenschapsvergaderings hier heet nie.
Sometimes we also visit churches as deployed cadres in government and coming from the rolling path.
Ngamanyama krasasia ya nasesen konzuweni, njenga abantu abaku chweyo indoyokba bayo melaa indausabo.
Ons lees soms ook besucher af en karken.
But we are not told we must not speak like politicians because we are politicians.
Kotwa kuba suges kawelondo aitetu kutimasnategi, njenga abantu be politi, kisinga abantu be politi kikasila.
Maar wat ik voor ons gezegd dat is niet eens politici, moet proeven, want ons is politici.
We are here as politicians to address the community challenges because the community is the one that votes us in our different parties to power.
Sizera apa uku zo chongana ne mingeni abacha melana nao, abantu ba kutu kuenzeli indoyokba siboni, indoyokba sisonbululanjani ukbas melabona.
Ons is hier eens politici voor die mensen om alla andere waarwandel is hela, wat ons in jij de macht inechtemet.
Oh, trabetube di ebingesaabi, they must deliver so that they can have platforms like this to address communities. Thank you very much.
Die DA moet diensten lever, showt alle ook een platform zoals jij kan, om die gemeenschap te kan ansprek.
Our DA colleagues must not be afraid kuba silapa sisebenzana kuunye siza wezumsebenzuetu.
Thank you very much to the deputy ministers for the response. Unfortunately, as we indicated in the beginning, we'll take questions until half past four. It is almost half past four.
Die bulale kuba patiswa besteswa ukchata, imi buzo, tekmetikala ntsinbi esine, sesisondele ku lokchala ntsinbi esine.
Bye, danke, agent ministers, voor die antwoorden op het verschak, het ongelukkig is wat ons aan die begin van vermaalselprogramma angedaan is, zullen ons pravat tot half vijf doen, dit is nou omtrent half vijf.
I want to take this opportunity to thank the deputy minister Manamela, deputy minister Masuku and deputy minister Masina for affording the community of Eden district an opportunity to engage, raise their issues and for them also to respond.
Ma di bulale osseke la bapatiswa boba tatu, ngokba bazos nikesela apa, ba ni ke indetazalo, zeku buzwe, nemibu zo, e buzwey.
Ik wil voor die geleidendheid gebruik maken om voor agent minister Manamela, agent minister Masina en agent minister Masuku te bedanken voor die geleidendheid wat helle voor die gemeenschap gegeet om helle bekommende ze te upper, zodat helle daarop antwoord kan krijgen.
Let me also take this opportunity on behalf of the deputy chair of the NCOP to thank members of the legislatures and members of the national council of provinces to be able to spend the day, third day with us, will continue tomorrow.
Ma di bulale ama lungu epunga lesiswa lama pondo, nama lungu epondo apa, kwendi mayawo, nenakreba abaitchabatila yobo onke.
Lat ik ook voor die geleidendheid gebruik maken om leder van de NFVP en leder van de Profeedale Wettgevers te bedanken dat helle bij vandaag bij ons is, voor jullie derde dag, zoals ik net vurnde gesagt bedankt, dat helle vandaag voor die derde dag bij ons is, ons op more voortgaan.
And thank you to the community of Eden district for participating in the deliberations today. Ndjabulela inkosi, bye, danke.
Dank je voor de gemeenschap van Eden District, zodat helle zo goed bijgewonen is vandaag en bijgedraad. Bye, danke.